This is the reorganization meeting of the city council. Today's date, January 8, 2025, at 5:35. Acting Presiding Officer of the Council, Victoria Ann Cups, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30 p.m. At this time, as a courtesy to the governing body, I would ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones, pagers, and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. The sole purpose of this meeting is to select a council president. I will now take roll call. Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales? She's absent due to illness. Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
And Councilwoman Tejeda?
Present.
We now stand for the indication.
Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body on this new year to start. Give us wisdom to understand the needs of our residents, of our city, and also protect those that are defending our freedom abroad and also in our country. For our children, the residents of this, the children of this city, protect them, guide them, and protect their family. With that, I say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion for a council president.
I make a motion to nominate to the position of Council President Maladi Tejeda.
I'll second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll take the call on Councilwoman Tejada. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tejeda?
Yes.
And we now have a council president. Lady, do you have someone to hold the Bible?
No.
Well, you gotta swear on the Bible.
Okay. Mr. Puccio. My old friend. My old friend.
This is dangerous.
Which way?
The way you have to go in where she can hold it.
Right, this way.
Okay. Please repeat after me. I?
I.
Maladi Tejada solemnly swear
Maladi Tejada solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments established
And the governments established
in the United States
In the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly perform
And justly perform
all duties of the office of council president
All duties of the office of council president
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
We want this.
And it's now your court.
So we do, oh, we comment?
Well, we do have an agenda. If anybody wants to comment on the communication, there is a communication. And then public portion, of course. Every meeting has to have a public portion.
Okay.
Well, I believe we're doing agenda part first, right?
Uh?
Agenda part first?
The agenda, public comment?
Yeah.
I need a motion to open the agenda comment for the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, it's open to the public. Five minutes maximum per speaker.
Come out, 359 Brook Avenue. It's amazing year, season. I get it open for five minutes early. So, all right, since we're opening up the agenda, we got somebody from the Board of Education. Let's see if we can get it out first so the public knows. How much money is taxes gonna go up this year? Is the Board of Education gonna raise taxes? And is the city gonna raise taxes this year? Because since then, haven't.
That's not on the agenda.
Doesn't have to be agenda, to be honest.
It says agenda item.
It's agenda portion.
There's no agenda.
There's a communication.
Oh, my God. I'll sit down, be back.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, communication. Are you gonna go over that, or we don't need to?
We don't need to. We don't normally do communications.
You already did. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. This is about anything. Now you can come up.
You're up.
You have to do it right.
Start this right. I mean, this new year starts right. All right, let's go back to we're gonna raise taxes. And then, you, the Board of Education, which you came up from the Board of Education, laid off and stopped buses. Those poor kids are walking in this cold weather. Twenty degrees upstairs. I mean, come on. This is what happened to this town because of the pilot you gave out and all the millions of dollars and money given away. Now the question is, are you gonna raise taxes this year? And if you're gonna be honest up front and tell people right now? Because even though you should have the budget done already or been worked on of whether you're gonna raise taxes or not, you came from the Board of Education in the last end of the year. Well, this should be there whether or not a tax is gonna go up, so the public will know. You know, everybody has to do a budget. People have to do a budget. So if you know your tax is gonna go up, you could start maybe saving some money. But you wait until July and then you raise it up. Faster than it should be going up. So honestly, I mean, the mayor sat here and said, this is gonna be the most transparent administration, and it hasn't been. I mean, the same thing with the health insurance. The health insurance is a scam. Now, you see what happened to that poor guy that got shot because of AI and insurance? Now, the question is, does Cigna use AI to stop health insurance for employees? Because I had to get pre-approved for a drug. Now, how did that come out that I didn't get pre-approved for a drug? I mean, on a conference call, they called it Obama. It was Obama who did. This Democratic town, it was Obama's fault because of Obamacare. So are we Democrats over here, or we conservative? You voted for a conservative broker. He's conservative. Maybe that's why this is happening. Because US Democrats want the conservatives to stop the health insurance. And the paperwork was out there. I was giving it to you. Councilman Puccio seen in it. So what is it here and why is it like that that city employees are getting their benefits cut? Or not have a hard time? It took me three months to get my drugs by a Cigna doctor. Why is that? Why is it I was hacked by two of the health insurance? And on that conference call, I mentioned about being hacked, and somebody jumped out and said, well, I didn't hack you. Is that a guilty conscience, that of being hacked? Now, why would a conservative, that's a politician in another town, donate $5,000 to get a $75,000 job? Or $90,000 job? Why was that? And why would you vote on it if you take it? Now, I know it's $15,000 pay-to-play. But if you donate $5,000, run a campaign for him, how does he get a job? Is this the way the Democrats run it? Coglin, the President Assembly Speaker, is one of the biggest donators to the Democratic Party. Is this how it's run? Make the donation and get a job? You're supposed to be transparent, so you should be out here speaking, why are benefits to employees being cut? Or you've gotta go through hoops to get your drugs or your medical treatment? When is it gonna stop? Since you hired a new broker, it seems that that's what happened. So why are you treating employees that you're supposed to be Democrats? Paloma always says that he's helping with drugs and everything else like that. But in this town, it seems like you cut it back. Why does that happen? And why is it happening? You should bring that brokers up here and to explain why that's happening, why somebody didn't get it, and let the city employees, well, how come your drugs were not, a prescription wasn't honored? Well, why are you being denied? So that's the problem here. And let's go back to the taxes. How honest are you gonna be upfront of how much the taxes are? And if the Board of Education raised taxes, that's a problem because of the pilots and the zero amount of money that you negotiate for the schools and the children. So this law firm, who is the Democratic County Chair, YB Law Firm, is the one that's negotiating that. Are we gonna give it to Kushner now again? Is he back on the agenda? Is Kushner back on the agenda?
Thank you. Well, I just wanna mention, and I don't know about the insurance for the city, for the employees, but my insurance, working for a hospital, went straight up. So I think it's not only for the city, but it's all around, that the insurance are sky high.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. I know the state health insurance plan went up by at least 12%. The city did go up 3%, but still, that's, when you compare that to the state, of course, that's a significant difference with the state being much higher. I will ask that question that the former council president asked. Does Cigna use AI for prescription or provider approval? I don't think so, but I will ask. And I'll put in writing, copy and copy him. With regards to his question of, you know, some employees being treated unfairly with regards to medical care, as we know, by all of their contracts, it has to be equal to or better than when it comes to healthcare coverage. When there are problems or instances where someone says, hey, my provider was, you know, Cigna denied it, they always have the option. They do come in, as I'm, you know, people do come to me, and we also reach out to Cigna. We reach out to the healthcare broker, and we try and find out why that did occur, if it didn't happen at all. So if there was wide-scale denials, I believe you would have this whole chamber filled. So I don't believe it's, but I will believe that there might be one or two offsets, and then we do try and correct those. If there is something with a prescriber or with a prescription, we try and figure that out. But to his point, it's a salient point, and I'll try and find out the answer for him and for all of us. Does Cigna use AI for prescription provider approval? I'll try and find that out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Vince Maciel, 215 Sheridan Street, Perth Amboy. I'd like the council to be aware that, as several other people said before the new year's hit, and congratulations, and I wish the council and the mayor success this year. Several peoples brought up the fact that the board members and the online representation of the boards need to be updated presently. And I appreciate that. And one way that could be done is, I am a member of the rent leveling board, and as of today, as far as I know, the meeting dates have not been updated, and they haven't been in any newspaper. So here's the list of the approved rent leveling board meetings. Also, if I may comment on the facts that are present. I've been a board member for four years. And the facts presently are, we've had, we've had dozens of complaints and applications filed with the board appropriately. But in the past year, two years, we've had overwhelmingly filed decontrol forms with the rent leveling board. And I think it's almost going 10 to 1 in terms of that. The city should be concerned as, with the finances of the landlords as well as the tenants that are having to pay rents. And people that come before us are rent payers upfront. For many, many years, these people pay rents. And there are predicaments in the backgrounds concerning banks, concerning upkeeps of the units, concerning capital improvements that are taking place. But one point I'd like to make, I think there's a lack of response with the actual tenants filing complaints. I have, for today, and I'll appear at each and many meetings as I can, if I'm allowed to, if somebody doesn't stop me, I will have the complaint forms that tenants can file with the rent leveling board. Because I think there's been a lack of response. This is not to say that we shouldn't have a level approach and appropriate documentation that is needed to verify whether somebody is paying rents. And that is up to a tenant as well as the landlord in terms of their responsibility to Perth Amboy. But I believe I'm doing this, and I will appear, I think I can appear to six meetings this year. I will come with the rent tenant complaint forms in each meeting. If there's any tenants that are attending or see this on the television network that want me to discuss this, to assist them with filing the complaints, I will be available with that. I would encourage them to find friends, if they can, visit Olive Street, and they have a legitimate beef, that there's a violation of their rents in terms of going above the rent, I encourage them to do that. It's their responsibility. If they find the form inconvenient, then you're going to have a problem. I have been before judges in the state of New Jersey because I filed forms appropriately, because it was needed for the environment. So I'm, I'll provide this, and I would think that it should be more available for tenants in Perth Amboy. Spanish and English. Here it are, two copies today. And I'll appear at each meeting if any tenant is available. I think I'm being responsible for doing that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we'll just adjourn this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, so we start the caucus now?
This is the caucus meeting for January 8, 2025, in the council chambers. Presiding Officer of the Council, Maladi Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and in the city and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, following the reorganization meeting at 5:30 p.m. Right now is 5:55. The council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales is absent due to illness. Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public on agenda items only.
Ken Ball, 359 Brook Avenue. You gonna have a separate thing on the bid?
Yes.
On the bid. All right. These home improvement contracts, 9-1, 10-1, 11-1, 12-1, I see one company's got two different bids here. One's $17,000, one's $29,000, I think, the same thing. So that's because it's below the bidding area, or?
Mr.?
That's okay. Well, you answer it as soon as I'm done.
Okay.
You know, it's actually amazing that now, all of a sudden, we're getting these home improvements. Well, there was a prior administration that did that, and they gave bids out for roofing. Well, I got elected at the time, and I went to get my roof done. And it turns out, my roof, when I went out to somebody, was almost $900,000 cheaper than the city's bids to do a roof the same size. So the question is, how does that happen? Is that happening again? If I could go to myself and call up three roofers and get a price less than what the city said to this lady who was supposed to get a grant, was $900 to $1,000 more. So the question is here, how are you handling these bids? Who is handling it? And how's that happening? Because I seen how it works. I was on the other end, and I got mine cheaper by calling somebody. So how is this gonna be? Are they get a certain amount of hours, certain amount of money? Somebody should be explaining that. There's $22,000, $17,000, $17,000, $21,000, $29,000 to these companies. So how is that money gonna be handed out? Or how's it by hours? How is it gonna be done? Because I've seen the scam before. So the question is here, are we going back to what happened? Now, you've said, Councilman Puccio, Maladi, when the Bartlet administration stole that money for the health insurance. Now, it seems like?
Mr. Ballard, that was before we got on the council.
Yes.
Not on the council, on the Board of Education.
Before we got on the board.
That was before we were on the board.
Well, you didn't money, but you know, because you would have benefited once we found out that they stole the money.
And we got the money back.
And you got the money back. Because in that office is where it was found out that they were stealing the money. Because I was screaming about doing audits on the health insurance. I screamed it out, and finally, they did. And actually, I had a little, um, yeah. But that's what happened. And now we're recycling people back in. I believe the insurance people, I believe now contractors. I see the same thing that's happening that happened in prior administrations, that people benefit. Now, basically, looking where some of your money came from on your campaigns, came from LLCs, realtors, and everything else like that. So the question is, who are these people? This town is what, 22% of homeownership? And everything is LLCs? So who's benefiting from the campaign money that came in and stuff like that? Does anybody know what you got in your campaigns and who it came from? So the question is, LLCs that donated money to your campaign, that don't live in this town? That don't live in this town, Plainfield and other places, who donated money to your campaigns? Are they benefiting because, the same thing about the renters? You know, they're renting, they're apartment from LLCs. So who's benefiting here? Is the taxpayers benefiting? Did your campaigns benefit? Can you sit here and show that your LLCs, these realtors and these other companies that donated money have nothing to do with any of this? Because this shows me, we're going back. If I'm gonna get a roof, I can get three bids from three legitimate companies and get a price. And then come and say, if you're gonna give me a grant, well, here's the three bids, here's the three companies. And if they're legit, it's fine. But you're giving out contracts. And they're not bid it out. You don't see how many hours, how much money, what it's for, and the else like that. And there's two of them here. So I mean, it's got the point here. What is going on? What is going on? I mean, it's just a shame. You're back to doing the same thing that a guy went to jail for.
For the record, it was bid it out. The thing is, they didn't put it in there because I saw it on the back.
They don't put it out?
But, yeah, can you? Ms. Vasquez? It's in the back of the? No, no, I understand. It should be on the agenda. We had asked for that before.
So in the, what is it that you're looking for? What is the question?
No, he wants to know the process of how the home improvement is going to be happening.
So that was all spelled out. CGPNH are affordable housing agents that were approved by council to run our home improvement program. They put out the pre-applications. They vet the folks. They do the application process, income verification. They seek out contractors to do the work. Once you, they get approved on their contractor list, whenever there's a project, they put out a bid for the project. There's responses in that bid package. Of course, there's political disclosure forms. There's the Russia and the Barmen and all the other bid requirements that are found in every bid package. So they get responses from qualified bidders. They go with the lowest bid. You have that in your packet, the name of the companies that answered the bid, the amounts, and the bid awardee is all listed in the resolution and in the packet. That project then is awarded by council, not to exceed $25,000. The work is done. There's an inspector that goes out midway through to see that the work is being done. The property owner verifies, signs off on certificates. They get a partial payment. Then there's a CO issued at the end. They get a final payment upon inspection and COs. The CGPNH also does our affordable housing monitoring, reporting with the state. So this is a well, well-ironed machine. They know what they're doing. We are on top of it, and there is nothing sketchy about it. I do want to bring up that it's going so well that 482 residents have actually submitted a pre-application. Of the 482, 437 were already invited to submit a full application. Only 44 remain on a waiting list. Forty-nine single and multifamily homes have finished the application process, of which 14 of them are currently active, and you have some in front of you to actually start the construction process. So this is a really good program that's gonna benefit the homeowners of Perth Amboy and residents of Perth Amboy who live in those homes. And they're for low to moderate income families. So this is definitely something that I wanna thank the council and administration for pushing forward, and especially our housing trust fund, which is how we're affording this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Director Vasquez, I just wanna ask you a question.
Yes.
These are actually five different locations.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to hear. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, bids. Bids were received on December 17. Bids were received on December seventeen, twenty twenty-four for the following traffic signals and parts. Signal Control Projects LLC for ninety thousand dollars, which is the recommended bid award. Was there only one company who bid for it?
Yes, for that one. That's what's listed.
Report. Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following: Investment report for the month of November twenty twenty-four. Revenue and appropriation status report as of November twenty twenty-four. Current fund, water, wastewater utility, parking utility, harbor side, marina utility. Number three. CME Associates submitted a copy of the preliminary investigation report prepared pursuant to R two thirty-seven five twenty-three to undertake the investigation and redevelopment study as a preliminary analysis for condemnation area in need of redevelopment determination on Black eighty-nine lot one dot zero one to four dot zero one.
Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Green. Mr. Green, where is this?
Yes.
General area.
I have the report here if you want to look at it. Oh, this is communications. Hold on, sorry.
All right, we can move on, and just let me go.
Here it is. And here's the whole thing.
So Smith and Herbert Street.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That goes on top.
Yeah, I'm good.
Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about addition. Number two. Ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-ten to twenty twenty-one of the City of Perth Amboy in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, finally adopted December eighth, twenty twenty-one in order to include an additional project. Resolutions R two one twenty-five, authorizing temporary budget appropriation for the calendar year twenty twenty-five municipal budget. R three one twenty-five, supporting the feasibility of relocating a bus stop along Route New Jersey Thirty-Five, southbound of Dorothy Street by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. R four one twenty-five, consenting to the redesignation of Maria J. Rivera as Public Compliance Officer, PACO, for the City of Perth Amboy effective January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. R five one, one twenty-five, correct?
Oh, six twenty-five, yeah.
Authorizing a professional service agreement with JB Associates for financial advisory services for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. R six one twenty-five, directing the tax collector to place a lien on six ninety-three Hanson Avenue, Black three oh three, Lot forty-three, in the amount of one thousand eight dollars with fifteen cents for charges incurred by the Department of Public Works to cut, trim, and clean the property. R seven one twenty-five, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Signal Control Products LLC for traffic signals and parts. Three-year contract in the amount not to exceed the sum of ninety thousand dollars commencing January first, twenty twenty-five. R eight one twenty-five, authorizing submission of recycling tonnage grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and designating Joe's Quillis to ensure the application is properly filled. R nine one twenty-five, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to award a bid to A three Contracting LLC for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. R ten one twenty-five, awarding a bid to Barham Barham Home Improvement for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. R eleven one twenty-five, awarding a bid to RS Construction for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. R twelve one twenty-five, awarding a bid to Certified Pro Service for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. R thirteen one twenty-five, awarding a bid to RS Construction LLC for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand dollars. R fourteen one twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the fiscal year twenty-five State Legislative Grant Program for the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to carry out a project to acquire the property at three thirty-three dash three forty-one High Street to construct a public safety facility. R fifteen one twenty-five, approving the introduction of the twenty twenty-five Perth Amboy Business Improvement District Budget. And I think Yolanda has some presentation for it. Are you going to present that part? The mic. Yolanda, get closer to the mic.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Flores, and I am honored and excited to be here today as a newly appointed executive director for the Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation. I look forward to working collaboratively with each of you to continue the advancing goals and initiatives that support the betterment of our community. You can change the slide. The CID provides extra services and programs that go above and beyond the city, what the city alone can offer. These things include keeping our commercial districts clean, promoting local businesses through events and marketing, improving public spaces, and making the area safer and easier to navigate. Really? Okay. How about now?
Get closer to the mic. That mic is a little old.
Is this better? Okay. The special improvement district is a designated geographic area where property owners within that area agree to pay an additional assessment to fund the public improvements and services that specifically benefit their district, typically aiming to enhance the economic vitality and appearance of in a commercial area, like improved streetscapes, security, marketing initiatives, beyond what's provided by the general municipal services. Essentially, it's a public-private partnership where property owners collectively contribute to improve their local area. Next slide. Uh, here is a timeline. Nineteen ninety-five, the Smith Street Corridor is where it started, and the proposal of an opportunity to examine if an expansion met the needs of the entire business community in twenty twenty-one. A key part of the process was the formation of a dedicated steering committee under a consultant made up of business owners from the current district and expanded property owners and community leaders that met monthly. These individuals volunteered their time and energy to evaluate the expansion, ensuring that it reflected the needs of the business community. Once presented, the bid board approved. It was introduced to the city council in June of twenty twenty-four to change the bid ordinance and the budget allowing us officially to include expanded business areas. This decision was a testament to the strong partnership between the city and our business community. Now, we're here to present the introduction of the twenty twenty-five budget. But before I share the budget, here's a snapshot of the expanded district. We went from approximately three hundred properties. Oh, next slide. We went from three hundred properties to about one thousand one hundred thirteen, from a two hundred forty-seven thousand budget. Please change slide. To now a total budget of one point seven two zero six five three. The key goal is to invest in improvements, services, and business support. It's enhancing the public spaces and infrastructure, supporting local businesses, and streamlining administration. Next slide. And revenue highlights are where the money comes from. All revenue is derived from assessments totaling the one point two million. And why it matters? It's because it demonstrates the community's investment in itself. Next slide. Here's the budget allocation summary. It summarizes the total expenses under each category and provides examples. So with the capital and visual improvements, it's about forty-nine percent. It includes streetscape, lighting, sidewalk repairs, and facade grants. The retention and attraction support supports the programs that strengthen local businesses. And the business development funds initiatives to attract new businesses. With the administration, it ensures efficient management and operations. Next slide, please. We've recently had several grand openings. Businesses are being attracted to Perth Amboy, and this is so important because we want the diversity and the growth of our city. And an example of this particular one at Refresh Tea was the facade grant as well as the grand opening. We welcome them this year. Next slide. We also are investing in outside to attract, you know, outside publications. We want to attract visitors and business to Perth Amboy. Next slide. And why approve this budget? The direct benefits to the residents and businesses, investments in the infrastructure and public services, and reflects the community-focused growth and responsibility. Next slide. This is the budget proposal, and I thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Anybody has any question for Yolanda?
That was pretty good.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a comment. I'm definitely excited with new businesses such as the tea and the various restaurants, and we hope to definitely continue seeing more diversity. And I know that's what the residents have been saying, and of course, the council. So thank you and congratulations.
R sixteen one, R sixteen one twenty-five, authorizing memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the County of Middlesex for the use of specialized equipment.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Green, what is this specialized equipment?
Get closer to the mic.
Oh.
Remember, your mic is not.
All right, how about now?
Yes.
I know the chief is here. This is dealing directly with the police department. I'll have the chief talk directly regarding it, as well as the next one, which is dealing with the federal government.
But I just wanted to know what the specialized equipment was.
You can say what specific equipment it is.
This is, excuse me, good evening. This is for the county, the agreement with the county. That is for any equipment that we may borrow from the Office of Emergency Management, a command post trailer, or anything like that for any large-scale incidents, as well as any specialized investigative materials that we may need from the prosecutor's office.
Helicopter?
They don't have one. Only mosquito patrol does.
Thanks, chief. I'm good. I'm good.
R seventeen one twenty-five, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy through the City of Perth Amboy Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office ten thirty-three program to enable the Perth Amboy Police Department to request and acquire excess Department of Defense equipment. I believe R eighteen is pulled up.
Yes, if we could return that to administration. That was passed last year.
Okay. R nineteen, authorizing settlement of the workers' compensation litigation titled Brian Strzynski versus the City of Perth Amboy, CP number twenty nineteen dash one nine zero three eight, for the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars with sixty cents. R twenty one twenty-five, authorizing transfer of calendar year twenty twenty-four budget appropriation in the total amount of five hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. R twenty one one twenty-five, authorizing a twenty twenty-five athletic social club license to Double S Social Club for premises located at four fourteen Smith Street, Black one oh six dash two, Lot forty-three dot zero two. R twenty two one twenty-five, expressing gratitude to Bienvenido Torres for his years of dedicated public service. R twenty three one twenty-five, resolution of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey in support of online legal notices. R twenty four one twenty-five, awarding a non-fair and open contract to Concentra for occupational medical and pre-employment testing, except pre-employment testing for police officers. R twenty five one twenty-five, awarding a non-fair and open contract to Hackensack Meridian Health for pre-employment testing for police officers. R twenty six one twenty-five, awarding a non-fair and open contract to Kyle and McManus Associates for professional services, planning services related to the housing element for the Department of Economic and Community Development in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. R twenty seven one twenty-five, authorizing a professional service agreement with Macmaneman Scotland and Bowman for bond counsel services for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. R twenty eight one twenty-five, authorizing a professional service agreement for calendar year twenty twenty-five to Sackler Realty Group Inc. for appraisal services for twenty twenty-five in the amount not to exceed appraisal services for twenty twenty-five in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. I'm sorry. R twenty nine one twenty-five, authorizing a professional services agreement for calendar year twenty twenty-five to Haglen Longo Moran Dants and Duques L L P to provide defense in the city in tax appeals in the amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars. Then we had some communications. And we are having a closed session for the settlement. Anything else? That's it?
It was for attorney-client privilege communications.
Okay. Thank you. Closed session resolution. R one one twenty-five, authorizing a closed session at the January eighth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss the attorney-client privilege and also the settlement.
Oh, yes, settlement.
Settlement?
Workers' call settlement.
Move it.
Second?
I'm sorry. You seconded, Councilwoman?
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
I gotta work. Council President Tejeda? I gotta get that right. Thank you.
You forgot me. You forgot me.
Oh, I thought I did. Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public on anything.
Are you going to have a special on the bid, or you're not going to have?
A special. You want to speak about the bid? She had a presentation.
I know, but you're supposed to have an open—whatever.
That'll be January 22nd.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Very good, thank you.
This is the introduction.
All right, so those houses, so that's—these four houses, five houses are going to get home improvements on that money. So that's what it is. So they didn't put the addresses down, you didn't put anything down in that paperwork just to look like you're handling a contract. That's what it looked like, you know? We're not—it's not up to us to go out, look in the book, to find any of that stuff out. I mean, I'm not supposed to come here and search, and even when you came here, the agenda wasn't even out. So—
I'm sorry.
R-18125—
Who has the phone ringing? Sorry.
What do you mean? A contract for $772,000, public safety compact cooling tower. Was there a bid on it?
I'm sorry?
Is there a bid on R-18125?
Yes, there was a bid. Remember, we took that as—we turned to administration, it passed last year, and there was a bid, and it was listed at that time. So it was removed from this agenda.
Well, you were setting the bid and put it back in here. You should at least, for the public to see it—I mean, the public, when you get on the computer, and if you were just looking up stuff, is that backup on the computer when you look up the agenda?
Yes.
It's on the website right now.
It's on the website right now. Okay, so you go to the website, you can do that. Is it?
It's on the agenda.
What's named unupdated, he claims. I don't know, I'm Barney Rubble, so I don't get on the website. I don't even have a computer, and I get hacked all the time. So I got set up by Democratic operatives and a conservative operative, but I keep getting hacked through your insurance companies. So that's just very suspicious that I get hacked through your insurance companies. Something wrong—something wrong here. But this stuff should be on this agenda. That's what it should be for the people to come here and sit down and not—you know what I mean, you can have everybody sit at the book and look at stuff. It's the same thing when you go to a closed session. Attorney private—you know, if you're going to talk about a lawsuit, that lawsuit should be listed. That's what's told, that's the way the government's supposed to operate, transparency of what's supposed to be here. I mean, I didn't see anything, I don't know if it's on a website, there's supposed to be, I got a phone call, and the police officer is suing you for discrimination. But it's true or not, I don't know, it's a lawsuit. So the question is here, this is transparent. The mayor sat here and screamed it. This is the most transparent. Since I've been coming here, it's not. Bids are not here. You could say this was here, 772 was three months ago or four months ago, but not everybody can make every meeting. So it should be here, if that's going to be listed, that this prior bid, and there was other bids. I mean, doesn't it take that much to put that on here so the public can see it? This is what's supposed to be here, so you have the information. So if you can do these houses, I can go to these houses and take a look and see, okay, what's going on here? You know, I got a house right across from me that they're doing construction that—I keep limiting, I mean, they work on Sundays, they work on this. No use calling anybody up because once you start showing the pictures of it—I got another one—it's a shame, because that's what happens here, you know? And then I got a miss behind it here that was totally kicked out of a bar. Now, I know how that feels, because I came out of a bar one day, and I was told by Councilwoman's husband not to show up at these council meetings, that I shouldn't come. So what is it here nowadays that you don't want people coming here to talk or speak or say anything? And it's not that many people that come up here to speak. And most of the time, when I'm talking to you, it's deer in headlights. So it's a shame that you got to come up here and ask all these questions that I shouldn't have to ask. They should be here, on this agenda. And the only thing about the bid, I would say, I just looked at it quickly, $7,000 for furniture? What do we love furniture in this town? $37 for the mayor's office, $7,000 for the bid? I mean, I don't know. It's amazing that we have to have comfortable—every time somebody takes over a new office, we have to get new office equipment. It happened with our police director. He—we hired a police director, orders a desk, the desk was too big, couldn't even fit into the office, so he had to give it to somebody else. That's the problem around here. You spend money—you wouldn't spend your money that way, but everybody will spend taxpayers' money that way.
Thank you.
Vince Maciel, 215 Sheridan Street. I don't—I don't think anybody could—Happy New Years, too. I don't think anybody could have missed the news in Edison, New Jersey concerning their water breakage of some pipes that supposedly, quote, "They did not know it existed, they didn't have it on their maps." So the question I have is, can such problems concerning our water piping and supply to the residents, because my understanding, they had to put people up in hotels, they had to have five or six different facilities accepting people, providing water? Can such a situation happen for the city of Perth Amboy? And just one thing I'd like to add, you know, since we're celebrating Martin Luther King's birthday on the 20th, I think that the council and the mayor and the business administrator, everybody should understand that in this country, as King said, somewhere I heard there's freedom of speech, somewhere I saw there's freedom of the press. I think you should practice that, and I appreciate Mr. Perez Jimenez answering if he knows of anything.
I'm sorry, you guys, that's—
I'm sorry.
The water director is here.
Information about the—
And then I'll chime in.
Maria, espérate un momento, que le hice una pregunta a él, deja lo que él conteste.
Good evening. That could happen anywhere.
Get closer to—
I'm sorry?
Get closer to the mic, because it's hardly here.
That could happen anywhere. The problem that—in Edison, what happened is that they were not aware of that water main specifically. It was not in their records. That's why it took so long for them to shut it down. In our case, we have pretty much records of all our mains. So, I mean, things could happen, but especially if we don't have records. But over here, I don't think that it's going to happen something like in Edison, hopefully.
Hopefully. We don't have anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, and my respect to the city council this evening.
Lo veo bien bonito a todas las mujeres, yo creo que a Puccio ya hay que sacarlo de ahí, no es el único hombre que hay.
I see all the councilwomen very beautiful. I think the only one that needs to be removed is Councilman Puccio.
Okay, yo vengo hoy a pedirle a ustedes cinco concejales, usted presidente, al abogado y al administrador y al jefe de policía.
I come here this evening to request of the members of the city council, the business administrator, the police director, and everyone here.
Algo que pasó conmigo y está pasando.
Something that happened to me and it continues to happen.
Este, yo pido la renuncia de Vizca Alcalde de aquí, Miguel Arrocho, por los ataques que me está haciendo a Jorge Icey. Tengo prueba, tengo video, y—
Okay, yo no puedo traducir si es mucho porque para no perder este el concepto de lo que está dando el mensaje, okay? I am here to claim and to ask for the resignation or the firing of Mayor's aide, Miguel Arrocho, for the continuous harassment that he has been instilling in my person.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can you stop the clock a minute, city clerk? I don't think it's appropriate that—it's appropriate for someone to come up to the mic and throw an employee under the bus and have one of our directors interpreting. I think it's highly unethical. So, so at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you know, I don't think this is the forum, number one, for this. And number two, we're—you know, and with due respect to Ms. Roman, that she is a director, she is a administrator for the city.
We—we had a translator—
No, I'm not questioning—
You gotta let me talk, sir. We had the translator. Unfortunately, it was misplaced, and so until we had—when I say translator, I'm sorry, a little machine, I should explain that a little bit better. It's an automatic machine that would translate the voice. Unfortunately, it was misplaced, and until you received that back, she's the person responsible for losing it. I had to help do it.
I'm thinking, I'll, yo pedí diez minutos por escrito, este, para que me lo dieran porque tengo que explicar todo el caso de los arrestos que me han hecho a mí todo y necesito diez minutos, por favor.
I'm sorry.
She just wanted to talk, so—
Because, Maria, solo cinco minutos es que se le dé.
Es que en cinco minutos, yo como un intérprete, no puedo explicar todos los casos, que tengo ocho casos de policía aquí. Por favor, respondo respeto y que me den diez minutos.
Todo el mundo tiene cinco minutos. Cuando ella vaya a traducir, Vicky, can you stop when Diane is translating?
President, yo hice por escrito, hace una—
This is—
President, yo hice por escrito, es por escrito que yo necesito diez minutos.
Oh, wait, I think the—
Por favor. Yo no creo cuál es el problema que no me lo pueden dar.
Okay. Did you get any response about it? Te dieron alguna—
Yo hice una carta y se la mandé a ustedes.
A response to what?
Pidiendo un intérprete diez minutos de—
I missed all that.
No, no, she's talking that she requested 10 minutes.
Oh.
But I don't think she got any—
No, I was told by the administration that it was no. She can speak at the public portion.
Por qué? Usted sabe del caso, porque yo vine a hablarlo con usted y sabe que yo necesito tiempo, porque tengo ocho casos aquí. Ya me ha quebrarme diez minutos, por favor.
I did say five minutes at the regular time, just like every other resident, and I didn't know that she would castigate an employee, but that's her right to do that. And she's about to say that at the mic, so—
While we're talking, at least give her some—
Right, time back, I'd say.
Because we've been taking her time.
She could start it again at five.
But it's still going. It's still going. I just left. I thought it was stopped. But anyway—
It was.
When Councilman Puccio asked me to, but she can—give her a few minutes extra, I guess, I don't know.
It was very simple, just give her more time and stay in.
Okay. Maria, yo no te puedo dar diez minutos.
We haven't done it for anyone else.
We haven't done it for anyone else.
Entonces, yo no voy a hablar. Lo único que le digo que lo que está aquí es grave para la ciudad. Este, Miguel Arrocho—
Me está haciendo una cosa bien grave, y yo pido diez minutos ahora, porque yo aquí pago taxi. Aquí yo pago taxi, en esta ciudad, y yo pido diez minutos con mucho respeto a todos ustedes. Entonces, ahora esto va en vivo.
Ms. Roman?
No, 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 no. Ay, ay. Maria, yo no te puedo dar diez minutos.
Está bien, no te preocupes.
Because everybody—
Yo tengo un abogado como quiera.
Everybody who comes here—
Esto es una sobra, tú eres una sobra.
Okay.
La pieza es en mi cama. Es mía, la pieza es mía. Yo la alcalice, Miguel Arrocho.
Okay, tú la alcalice.
Ella es una sobra mala.
But I see that you have a complaint, you can say.
Entonces, el vicealcalde que me insulta para que yo no entre a la fiesta. Mueres mala, mueres mala, mueres mala. ¿Vieron? Esto es, este, Miguel Arrocho.
Okay.
Por favor, pongan los cinco minutos.
No, 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 you started already.
No. Tú— Él mandó apagarlo, y ella lo dejó tres minutos. Yo necesito los cinco minutos.
Pero ya tú hablaste por dos minutos.
Yo no es—estábamos discutiendo entre nosotros, y me quiero quitar los cinco minutos también.
Okay. Okay. Maria. Do me a favor—
No le gusta, es tu verdad que no.
No, 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 no. Okay.
Mi respeto para usted, presidenta, pero yo tengo mi derecho.
Tú, tú tienes tu derecho.
Déme los cinco minutos, porque estabamos todos discutiendo, hablando los cinco minutos míos.
The thing is, you have five minutes. But I want you to take the five minutes, and you just explain what you need to explain. I don't want to go back and forth from video to you or to anything. Just explain what you need to—
No.
Necesitas hablar lo que vas a decir.
Okay, está bien.
Okay.
Okay, yo quiero que suspendan de vicealcalde a Miguel Arrocho y cuatro policías que tuvieron envuelto en dos arrestos míos.
I'm sorry, but I don't—
I am not a certified translator. She's doing a live recording, and I do not feel comfortable. I don't want my Spanish to be misinterpreted, and then later won't be used.
And also, in reviewing the documents that the resident provided, I would advise the council not to comment as well. Between that and the fact that the complaint—the person being complained of is a resident.
Anybody else?
Well, first off—
Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, now, I need a motion to go to closed session.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we will be going to closed session. When we come back, we will adjourn this meeting and we'll start the council meeting. Right now is 6:42. I need a motion to return from closed session.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, so we're ready to—to start the—okay, so— This is the council meeting for January 8, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall 260 High Street, following the real—following the caucus meeting and the closed session. Right now is 7:40. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individual present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roco, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales is absent due to illness. Councilwoman Puccio? I forgot her order again.
That's okay, I'm going to answer anyway.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public on agenda items. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Bits. Bits were received on December 17, 2024 for the following: traffic signals and parts. Signal Control Products LLC $90,000 recommended bid award. Reports Jill A. Gordon Goldie, CFO, submitted the following investment report for the month of November 2024. Revenue and appropriation status report as of November 2024. Current fund, water, wastewater— Current fund, water, wastewater utility, parking utility, harborside marina utility. Number three, CME Associates submitted a copy of the preliminary investigation report prepared by pursuant to R two thirty-seven five twenty-three to undertake the investigation and redevelopment study as a preliminary analysis for condemnation area in need of redevelopment determination on block eighty-nine lot one dot zero one dash four dot zero one. Ordinance, first reading, non-public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five C A C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition. I need a motion to... I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puchio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-ten dash twenty-twenty-one of the city of Perth Amboy in the county of Meadowsex, New Jersey, finally adopted December eighth, twenty twenty-one, in order to include an additional project. I need a motion.
Move. Uh, that was Stacy, that was Stacy.
I need a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puchio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, look over the resolution, if you need anything full, uh, just remember the number eighteen is out.
I'm good.
You're good?
Same.
Okay. Okay, so the consent agenda is R two one twenty-five through R seventeen one twenty-five, R nineteen one twenty-five through R twenty-nine one twenty-five. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puchio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, um, we have public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. This, I need a motion to open to the public for any matter.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I'm too tall. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ray Walker, twenty-four sixteen Sunnyville Oval, um, I just got a statement. Hopefully I can get it done in five minutes. Uh, about R fourteen one twenty-five, um, to me and other people that I talked to, this makes no sense of possibly building a second new firehouse, looking for a new land on a small lot that possibly waiting two or three years to be constructed when already the city owns property in High and Commerce Street that should have never been closed, the building is solid, there is nothing wrong with it. Anyone can get custom-built trucks for the fleet of the department. City should get bids on estimates on updating the former firehouse and save it and reopen it as the fire department grows, that's, that's another thing in the fire department's history. The impound cars on the lot, uh, that could be moved to DPW property and now code enforcement and fire department. Uh, parking lot personnel has been issues on, uh, faculty and staff because of the school next door. Um, and if they were to stay on High Street, Fire Department, uh, wouldn't worry about parking and possibly save the other firehouses and keep them open, but no. Uh, to me, this is discouraging, uh, please save the former firehouse. Uh, the property is big enough, then just, um, invest and update the building. Uh, get rid of the first state squad, save the terracotta behind the red brick and at least build three one-fanning homes that match other side of the street or lower High Street in that space. Possibly keep the house and, uh, keep the former police building for new purpose of the city as a community center with programs, um, workshops, um, party museum, uh, cold blue shelter, uh, extra library space, extra art gathering place, um, and also have the parking lot, which is, uh, good instead of parking on the street. Uh, the city got six million dollars from, I guess, the state for recreation and historical related items. Uh, I hope some of that money goes towards possibly saving the former police building and could get another grant to save the building from the state. Uh, the former firehouse and police station, former police station could be another asset and benefit as for the city, once again, as it's done before. Um, I don't like the talks of, um, the proprietary house, uh, for the two-fiftieth anniversary coming up because to me, that's been recognized way too much and, uh, there's so many other historical related items that need more attention and need to be, um, thought of. Stand by. Well, what did the people back then, years ago, do for money? Uh, how was the war funded? Um, Chief Mullin wants to expand the fire department, which is good, how the city would be to do that? There's always been layoffs in years past, there is no money in the city, there is no money in the BOE. What's gonna happen? Looks like taxes are going up, uh, the city is wasting money, grants and taxes. Um, the city has, uh, wasted time on purchasing a ladder truck, which is coming twenty twenty-eight, should be ten years. And it's unacceptable for Chief Mullin and his guys not having the equipment to serve the city. Um, that is a ten-year age gap and, uh, city looks like it's wasting money, grants on taxes, on stuff that is not important. Um, it's not looking good, but this year and years to come, I hope, uh, for the best and, uh, city officials will come to their senses and have everyone included when they should be included. So I'm fighting for history and I'm fighting for public safety. I'm just supporting whatever I want to do and there seems to be a little pushback from the city itself by not being insurance paid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, council comments. Councilwoman Cruz?
Wishing everyone a successful new year and happy holidays to all. Thank you all for here, for being here, and congratulations again, Council President, a well-deserved. Congratulations, Councilwoman. We definitely, um, appreciate you and know that you'll have an amazing year. And congratulations as well to our mayor and to Councilwoman Rose Morales. And that's pretty much it, thank you.
I also have a comment.
Councilwoman, uh, Peralta, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm honored, thank you, um, for participating in my first board meeting. Um, it is a privilege and I am honored to be here alongside all of you dedicated folks. Um, and I'm open and excited to hear, um, about the concerns from the community and willing and ready to work hard to hopefully solve, you know, the issues that we have amongst our community. And congratulations to you, President, and to my running mates, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Puchio?
Uh, first of all, uh, I'd like to welcome Ms. Peralta to the council and congratulations on becoming a council member.
Thank you.
Uh, now the fun will begin. So... And also to Ms. Crawford out there, my classmate from Perth Amboy High School, class seventy-four, for her being reelected to the Board of Ed. I look forward to the upcoming year and, you know, just doing things that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And for me, I just want to, um, say thank you to my councilmen and councilwomen uh, for giving me the opportunity to be your president. Again, um, I feel honored and, um, we all continue just working together for the betterment of this community. Um, it's our duty and that's what we were elected for and we will continue doing that. Uh, on another thing, I just want to congratulate you and welcome you to our group. Uh, anything that we can provide, that we can help you, uh, we're here. Um, we can contact and keep on, um, helping each other to make this happen. Um, I'm sorry that Councilwoman Morales is sick today, but I also, congratulations to her, congratulations to Diane, uh, to the Board of Ed, hoping that we can have, we can continue having the conversation that we've been having and to make things better for all our residents. And every one of you, thank you, and have a happy and a prosperous new year. Um... And I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, good night.
Good night.
It's seven fifty.